For Lynette to check on her minute taking. And I had a request from Bonnie to make a statement.
Yes, thank you so much, Jane. This is our first school committee meeting of 2021. I'm requesting that we have a moment of silence to recognize in our own individual ways, the over 300,000 lives lost in the past 10 months to the COVID-19 pandemic, those who continue to suffer in so many ways from this pandemic, those in the medical field, our first responders, essential workers, who have struggled mentally and physically throughout this pandemic, the many lives lost to senseless violence, the need for our country to find a way to heal, the hopes we have for our nation's leaders, the work that our SBRSD teachers, families, administrators, and staff have done and are doing to meet the educational, food insecurity, and social and emotional needs of our almost 700 students in our district, and the work we as the SBRSD school committee still have to do as we move ahead in 2021.
Thank you, Bonnie, for putting some perspective. Because I know a lot of us are feeling very vulnerable right now. And we're here for the students to give our all, but to be aware that those among us at the table tonight have a heavy weight just from what we're living through right now. All right, so.
Thank you for allowing me to do that.
I'm happy that you brought it up, Bonnie. Thank you. So we have three sets of minutes. So I'd like a motion for the approval of the working meeting on November 24th.
So moved, second.
So we have Bonnie with Jeff as a second. I have one correction on that, those minutes. Let's see. Everything's spread out here.
We gave you too much space.
You did. There was, oh gosh. Here it is. It's on page 2, I believe, where it was stated that we had five policies and it meant it should have said five standing committees in our policy manual. Did you see that too, John? It was John's statement and I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't policies. And I can get to Lynette. Oh, here it is. It's on the motion that by Bonnie and seconded by Jeff on the, almost to the bottom of the second page.
Right. John Bruno mentioned that five standing policies are listed.
Yeah, he meant committees. Any other corrections? All right, is there a motion to approve? Or let's vote to approve, sorry. Start of the year. Roll call vote for approval. Carrie Anne?
As amended though, right?
As amended, yeah.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
And Art?
Yes.
And Jane, yes. All right. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from the December 3rd working meeting.
So moved, second.
Bonnie, seconded by Jeff. Any corrections on this set of minutes? Hannah?
I I had thought that after the student spotlight during that discussion, a motion came up, and I don't remember the wording, but it was around us looking into doing a land acknowledgement.
No, I'm on the work. That's the next set, Hannah, right now.
Oh.
Working on the second set of workshop meetings.
Sorry, I'll come back to it.
Yeah, I noticed that was missing too. So on the workshop meeting that was on December 3rd, I believe. Any corrections there? All right. All those in favor of approval, I'm going, Carrie Anne?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Jane, yes. Okay, so now we're going on to the meeting number 1,595 that was on December 9th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, so that was Jeff moved and Bonnie second. Is that okay? I heard Jeff's voice first.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so then, now Hannah, I'm recognizing you again.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had things out of order. So I don't remember the wording, but we voted on a motion to look into doing a land acknowledgement in our meetings and I felt like because it had been a motion and voted on it, should be captured in the minutes.
I will, I will listen to the minutes again, but I don't remember a motion being passed, but I'll listen again.
Yeah, it's possible that we, I know we brought it up that we had an intention to. I'm not sure. Jeffrey?
If I recall correctly, I think we were going to research what the motion would be of a land acknowledgement and then I think, Hannah, I think I emailed you afterward or something like that at some point saying like, I think it would be a good idea for you to make the motion when it comes up. So I think the motion was not made, but the same thing happened as well. I think there's a need to make it still.
Adam, there is also, Dennis has his hand up.
Thank you, Dennis.
Yes, on those meeting, on that particular, the third batch of meetings, or of minutes, rather.
Yeah.
Under E. I don't believe that is correct.
Wait a second, under E?
E was the school meeting calendar discussion.
Okay, let's go to
Page 12 of the packet.
I have clear memories on that.
Well, here's what happened. You know, I know exactly what happened. Here's why it was not correct. Basically, we started to have a discussion on that topic and then John, you know, basically said, move, move the question. Okay, and what happened was we went into that discussion period then, while we were in the discussion period, then John basically said, call the question. That then led us into the vote to, on whether or not we were going to have that, you know, that discussion or not, or continue. And basically, the roll call vote that's shown below that motion is the roll call vote that was taken in response to whether or not we should go into, whether the question should be called, okay? And basically, we never then went back and made a motion because you have to make another motion to basically vote on what you've just called the question on. You with me?
In concept, yes.
Yeah, I remember that that's what you think happened and I noticed that it wasn't reported out in the minutes the way you remembered it and I'm afraid I don't remember either, so I think we need to have Lynette look again.
She can listen to the tape.
I can, I can listen to the recording, but what I wrote down for the minutes is what I heard on the recording. If somebody else wants to listen to the recording again, I'm happy to let them do that and come back to me. Everyone speaks at the same time. You make a motion, then somebody else will chime in and it's really getting very difficult for me to write, keep track of what the motions are because people are just speaking all over the place. So if somebody else would like to listen to those minutes and bring it back to me, I'll be happy to correct them. And I'll listen to it again to make sure that I have it correct. But, you know, when everyone's talking at the same time, or somebody makes a motion, then they have, you have, you have a motion made by somebody, you have a second and then there's this all, this discussion and then somebody else will throw in another motion before this motion is made or somebody will call the question and there's no second to the calling the question and there's no roll call vote to calling the question and it gets very confusing for me to keep track of everything. So I'm just stating how I feel.
I volunteered to review that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan, and I appreciate that the fact that we, I think those who were in the room thought that they were voting and it does indeed get overlapping and especially when somebody calls the question, some of us don't realize that we were voting on calling the question rather than on the motion.
Correct.
And we need to get in the habit of paying closer attention. So while Dennis is feeling we could deal with that later because we are going back to that topic, so if we want to.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
We can, we can table the approval of these minutes to the next meeting.
Yep.
So that'll give us time to review it.
Yep.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
I see a lot of hands up. I see Jeff's hand and Dennis's hand, but I can't tell you which order that went in. I apologize.
Dennis was before me, but I think he was in the middle of talking.
His hand went down, so never mind.
Yeah, okay, so Jeffrey?
It's a request and Lynette, I think you do a very good job with notes and I appreciate the challenge that you're having. May I make a request, just as, if I were a layperson from the community reviewing the notes? We use a lot of shorthand and acronyms that we have in the education community in our notes and they need to be properly spelled out and I just noticed in this set of minutes, PLC, I was mentioning like student soft light, spotlight, SIP, even though it was like, you know, referring to school improvement plans, there should be almost like a parenthesis, open parentheses, SIP after school improvement plans in the section, closed parentheses, so it's defined, that's what we're talking about. And then later on in that same elementary and school improvement plan, we, there's a parenthesis saying including SEL and I was just thinking like, you know, the cynicism. Is that like, is somebody going to read that as second English learner or are they going to read that as social emotional learning? I just think as a practice, we should I don't want to make a motion on this, it's more of a request that if we're speaking in shorthand, it's first defined before we go into it and then when it's recorded in minutes, that it's clearly defined for the lay audience.
Well, I think like it could be done once and then, you know, like you would normally do in appropriate writing, you would say, you know, what the definition of a PLC and then you can go on to use the short version throughout. You don't have to do it every single time.
Right. All right, so this is the first time we've had a tabling since I've been in charge and I believe we have to vote to accept the table or?
Or I can just modify my, my motion and then Bonnie can second it, right? So I motion to modify my previous motion to table meeting minutes for
1,595.
1,595, thank you. Do the next school committee meeting after we have just verified what the minutes are and if there's an error in part E to have a remediation of that, if it's improper.
I'm more than happy to second that.
All right.
Hand up.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
The motion here is to update acronyms in our school improvement plan that were part of our minutes from the last meeting? Is that what?
No, no.
Questions, just dumb people. Okay, that's.
No, no, no. It wasn't, it wasn't that. No worries.
No, thank you, Charles, for the seeking clarification. We should all be brave enough to do that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Our positive sign Thursday message is something about encouraging kids to make mistakes, so I'm just trying to model it, Odie.
Excellent job.
Yeah, right. Okay, so roll call vote, Carrie Anne?
Yes.
John?
Yes, and I have a comment when we're done.
Okay, Hannah?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Danil?
Danil, yes, if you did.
Janice?
Yes.
Dennis?
Was that Janice or Dennis?
Dennis is now, yes. Go ahead.
Yes, for Dennis.
Okay, Art?
Yes.
And Jane, yes. Okay, a comment from
John.
John, go ahead.
I think we should task Jeffrey with finding out the proper format, whether it's APA or MLA or whatever and providing a template for that format for Lynette and maybe pre-fill it in during meetings as much as he can.
Okay, thank you for the comment. All right, we're going on to the enrollment. If Beth has any comments or anybody on the committee has any questions for Beth?
Well, the detail is in the packet and the excellent news starting off the new year is that we are up four students. So our January 1st enrollment number is 658 students.
Any question? Bonnie has a question?
Yeah, do we know with the numbers of students who were listed as now opting for homeschooling? Did you get a sense or when they, were they interviewed, do we know if it was particularly the homeschooling was driven by the COVID-19?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and yes, and they will plan to return when when they feel that it's okay for them to do so.
You answered my follow-up. Thank you.
All right, now we're going on to item E, which is miscellaneous correspondence. And in your packet, you will find two responses to our grant applications which were both denied. I requested information from Maevo Day at Berkshire-Teconic to see a list of the other of the recipients. She has not responded yet, but we do know that the Regional School District Planning Board got $2,500 for their request. And we don't know why the grant application that Beth and Sandy so generously put in was denied, but we do find that being small and where we are, we often don't get recognized. So I would like to propose, because those grants were important to us, that we possibly schedule a workshop meeting when we can to get a strategy together about how we are going to approach putting our anti-bias, anti-racist strategies into some sort of perspective that makes a difference in our school. And I'd like to get some feedback from the committee if you would like to be able to spend some time discussing this and figuring out our next steps outside of our regular business meeting where we have less time to discuss. So.
I saw hands again. I see Bonnie and Jeff have hands up.
Okay. So Bonnie, what's your feeling?
One, I'd like, if you can, would request the breakdown when our when our RFP response was reviewed. I don't know whether they do it by numbers, but having worked, because I've given workshops on grant writing for the Eagle Fund and other things, Berkshire-Teconic was good at giving us, this is where the weakness was on a proposal and I'd like if that way we can address it in the future.
Yeah.
I don't know if they did it by points in each different area, but if you could do that. And I do feel the anti-bias, anti-racism, that whole issue is definitely a critical one that we need to look at. And it's particularly important as our graduates go out to jobs and to the world, et cetera, coming from this area. They have recognized that there are shortcomings in it, which in some ways we can't do much about, but there are ways we can address the shortcomings that exist. So I'd be happy to discuss it, you know, offline, whenever.
Yeah, well, I think what I'm looking for is if all of us are very busy and our lives are chock full, this idea of us having workshop meetings has been, I think has been quite beneficial over the last 12 months and when we can have one, I just, I don't schedule unless I think that the committee is dedicated to spending time in that manner. So can I have other responses?
Jeff's hand is up. I don't know if you want to go there.
I think my question is more like, what was the criteria and the judging criteria and where did we miss?
Well, I think you're going to find
That's what she's saying.
What I found, the letter states that there had an overwhelming number of good applications and they just couldn't take them off. And, you know, I would only be doing hearsay about my sense of where this money came from and who made the decisions and whether was their typical style of doing things, but from Berkshire-Teconic, I think we can get a clear answer. Perhaps they're not back in the office yet because this came, you know, during the holidays. Are you referring to Beth about?
Maybe I'm repeating Bonnie and I apologize because I, but I think regardless of a lot of applicants, they judge their grants by a rubric and they, you're right, Bonnie.
That's what they all, yeah.
Right? And we need to know what that scoring is. So sorry if I'm repeating. I didn't realize I was repeating until I repeated, so. But it's a Bonnie.
Well, they've encouraged us to apply again, but again, I think as, and I think our communications and advocacy subcommittee is probably going to be, trying to be ears out there and researching and finding out more about how we, we can be seen as as who we really are and deserving of the funding that we so need. So, but you still haven't answered my question whether we should be looking for a date to get together and have a conversation. Can I, do I want a motion to see if, a show of hands, how you want to do this?
I would just, do you need a full school committee, the group to do it? Or do we want to, you know, maybe explore it with referring it to a subcommittee and then go from there?
Well, one of my issues
Sorry.
we were talking about was that we all need to sit down as a group and understand where each of us are coming from. So I, while there are some people who may have more time to work on it, I think that if we don't have the enthusiasm as a group to get the work done, then we're starting from behind the starting line. And I don't want to go forward until I feel like we're really going to grow and learn from the conversation that we're going to have.
Would that require an ad hoc committee to be formed so that we can publicly post?
No, it would just be a public, one, a workshop meeting like we had for well, the meeting that we had this summer to decide what our statement was going to be. That was a public workshop meeting. Anybody who wants to listen in can do so. We also had a meeting last fall about our roles and responsibilities where we got to a sense of where, where we have a say and where we don't. It's in that ilk.
All right, for the sake of time, I would make a motion, let's see whether people buy a motion, that we hold a workshop meeting for the purposes just described by the chair.
I'll take a second. Any second for that?
A second to discuss. May I speak or?
Yeah, well, you're, you've got the floor at the moment.
Can we just refer this to the outreach committee, the communications? Because there's going to be, if it's a workshop, then we have to have a quorum for a full body.
Well, I think if you heard my point is, I want to hear, I don't think this work makes any sense unless the full body has a say in how it goes forward.
Yeah.
I'm not going to promote a small group going off and making a plan that everybody doesn't, hasn't put their stamp on from the beginning.
Got it. I didn't catch that point. You sold me, although.
Speaking to the reason is I think this motion will give you a sense of whether the school committee wants to go ahead in that way.
Absolutely. Thank you, Bonnie. I appreciate it. Any other discussion before the vote? All right.
Oh, Dennis, Dennis's hand is up. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Dennis. Can you put your hand on top of your head and then I can see it?
I'll turn out the bright light behind me. How's that? No. I've got my skull cap on. It shouldn't be shining, you know.
What, you're blocking it? It's good.
Okay, so you're saying, just as a point of discussion in this, in this working session meeting we're talking about, this is basically going to be a relatively short, a single topic meeting, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so I think that, hopefully that'll help some of Jonathan's concerns or Jeff, or Jeffrey's concerns.
Yeah, I just, as Bonnie says, this, we need to get on to our business meeting and we don't have time to fully discuss this unless we're in a workshop setting, so. Janice?
I want to know if we're going to have a general discussion on the topic or whether we want to find out what issues had to do with the fact that we didn't get the grant? Do we want that information before we meet? Or go ahead and meet beforehand?
Well, I'll certainly get that information for you. It's more, I want to see each other, we each need to hear each other's interest in pursuing this topic. That's really the basic point of it and I will gather as much information as I can about why we didn't get the two grants and what we were hoping to get through those grants. Remember, Carrie Anne and I wrote them and you all didn't participate in the writing. Bonnie helped edit at the end, but more input from the full committee is, would have been great. We just didn't have time.
But I also think, if I can just add to this, that the purpose, I think, is regardless of whether or not we got funding for this, the statement that the school committee made was really important to the people who put it together and regardless of whether it was funded or not, we need a strategy as a body on how to move forward on our own, right? Because we're not going to just, it's not based on whether or not we got funded. This is what we believe needs to happen. So I think that's the importance of this meeting regardless.
And we have new members who didn't participate in that, so I really want to bring them into the discussion. All right, I'd like to take the roll call vote. If there's no other hands up that I'm missing.
I don't see any.
Okay, so Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Art?
Oh, you did.
Yes.
And Jane. Okay, so I will set to looking where we're going to have some time and making sure we have the materials that we need so that we're not, we can be as productive as possible. Bonnie?
Yeah, I have, just if we could get additional information. in terms of the work that Sandy and Beth did putting together the other grant application.
This is both grants.
Well, you'll see all of it. You'll see everything and, and the response, whatever. You're welcome to all of that.
Yeah.
And whatever, whatever information we can get from the state as to why we didn't get in there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I very much appreciate your, uh, interest in pursuing the conversation.
Jane?
Yeah?
Oh, I just want to add, um, that in the meantime, that if anybody's interested in looking up the Milton Public School District, they have a, a really strong racial equity policy that they've developed both within their school committee and they've also created a task force for, um, parents and students and teachers. And they have a, um, a student task force as well. So I've done a little bit of research about, um, models that we might look into. And it seems like while they are an urban school district, um, they seem to be leading the, the charge on this front.
Great. Okay, thank you. All right, um, now we have a student representative.
Uh, Janice, oh, Janice.
I'm sorry, Carrie Anne, I just wanted to make sure I had the name of the school district correctly. Could you repeat it?
Milton, M.I.L.T.O.N.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Milton.
All right. Thank you.
Student representative report. I think I see a student representative, uh, Odie, is that you tonight?
That's me.
All right. Thank you for coming.
All right. Of, of course. Thank you for having me. Um, my first time doing this, so I'm excited. So my name is Odie Fields. For those who don't know, um, I'm in 11th grade here in Monmouth, obviously. And I'm in school on Thursdays and Fridays in person. Um, so my first time doing this, I'm not exactly sure how this runs, but I have the general idea. So in school right now, the feeling is getting back into the rhythm of school after break. The break felt really well, really needed by all staff and students. Everyone was something super worn out. And, um, I think the feeling in school is kind of revived and refreshed, rested. Which is a nice feeling compared to the, um, the feeling before break, which was fatigue, kind of the end of the year kind of weighing down. Uh, in class from, I, it's funny because as I was going to write this, this, um, this afternoon or protect, prepare myself, I was thinking, oh, it's going to be super fun, it'll be easy. Um, but the crazy thing is I just, I just don't spend that much time. The students don't spend that much time talking to the staff and their friends because it's most, majority of schools spent online. So it's kind of difficult, um, but, uh, we'll continue on. In class, I think the big thing, uh, this week was, um, well, yesterday's events, obviously. Um, but then, um, just kind of events as a whole, because the country's going through a lot of historical moments. And so that's, that's been the, that's obviously huge. But one really positive thing is the school, now that all the, um, people spend time in school, the protocols and COVID, uh, regulations have kind of, um, gotten accustomed to them. So it feels a little less awkward, a little less, um, stiff. And so classes kind of feel, feel more natural, as natural as they can feel, um, not so awkward. And so that's just a nice feeling. It's just kind of get into the rhythm and everyone can have a productive conversation. Um, so that's a plus. And so then my last thing is if anyone has any questions for me, um, and I'd be happy to answer them.
Oh, Bonnie's hand is up.
Yeah, as usual. So Odie, thanks a lot. In terms of you mentioned that it, there hasn't been as much communication, I think, as you would like between students and other students and staff, etc. Have you thought about what would, you would like? Or as, as one of the lead representatives for the student body, have you thought about ways to gather that information to bring it to, um, the administration of our schools? So that's my question one.
So you mean how to better, have a better grasp of what the student body as a whole is feeling? Or how to better communicate, uh,
Both.
with the rest of the students? Okay.
Both.
Uh, I had thought about that as I was.
You stated it, yeah, the way you stated, yes.
As I was writing this, I was like, well, how do I obviously get in touch with those students? And so I think what I'll do is probably, uh, on some platform, set up a, a communication. So whether it's texting or something with the rest of students who I don't see. Because I don't see actually a lot of my grade. Um, most of my grade is completely online. Some are in cohorts that I'm not in. So I think that's the way I'm going to go about that in terms of getting, uh, in touch. And in terms of the actual communication, because I'm only seeing a certain, um, group of people. And then, so I have classes, obviously, with students. And so I can get to talk to them and the, um, lulls of the class. But then during advisory, I see a couple of other people. But in a whole, I probably see about and talk to about fifteen, sixteen students as a whole throughout my day, um, in my grade. So that's, um, so that's, that's the challenging part is you, you miss the, um, long conversations after class or during lunch, um, that you would normally get during a regular year.
So may I suggest something here? Just because I have worked with Mr. Carpenter a lot on the reopening. Maybe before doing anything through any social media, whatever, if you speak to, you know, Mr. Carpenter and Ms. Hubbard to get a sense, because it may make your outreach more, you know, more productive and they may have some ideas. Because I think it's great. I mean, that's, you, you have hit on one of the biggest issues that is being faced throughout the world and definitely in the United States. This whole issue for people between fourteen and twenty-one really being hit by the isolation. So you've got a couple of experts there and I'm volunteering. I'm sure Sandy will help. And definitely Jesse and, um.
Uh, Bonnie?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to give somebody else a chance to add.
All right, I'll hold my other question.
Thank you. Carrie Anne?
Hey, Odie, thanks so much. You did great, um, as always. Um, I'm wondering if you have any, um, communications with the Social Justice League group in school? And if there, um, is any way to, um, uh, kind of feed up to us a bit of, um, some of their concerns and their needs or what's going on from their perspective?
Absolutely. Um, I am, I've been, I'm in that Google Classroom, uh, class, but not, not, I'm not a active participant, but I see all the stuff they, um, post. Um, and I can get in touch with C.C. Caldwell, who really, um, is the driving force in that, um, with the help of Ms. Razzle. Um, so yeah, I can do that and I will do that.
Thanks, Odie.
Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Miller?
Hey, thank you, Odie. Uh, as always terrific, um, to see you, uh, even if virtually. I was just wondering if there's any update on France. I know you had, uh, at, at one point you were going to go abroad and whether or not you'll be able to do that next year.
Yeah, so, um, obviously, uh, so last year, uh, I filled out a, uh, application to the Rotary Program, which sends students abroad for either two weeks or a year. I filled out for a year. And I was canceled for obvious reasons. France shut down its borders fairly quickly. And actually, as soon as I finish this meeting, I will finish my second application and send it off, um, for next year. Uh, just a couple more questions to fill out and then it's off to the coordinator.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, going to student spotlight.
So, I have my.
Oh, Bonnie's hand is up.
Yeah, I know. I'm looking at time, Bonnie.
It, I could have finished the question already. The question is if, if, if you guys, whether it's Odie or the two principals at some point can address how yesterday was handled in school?
There were no kids in school yesterday.
No.
Yeah, so.
Talking about the events of yesterday.
The events of yesterday, how Odie mentioned it was handled. It was discussed in school today and I just wanted, I'm requesting that the administration or Odie or anyone can shed some light on that.
All right, so I'll defer that to, um, I, I, I'm looking at time here. I don't know whether we want to.
I mean, I can, I can just tell you, um, quickly that, you know, at the secondary level today, um, we had, uh, some classes have discussions about it, especially social studies and history classes. And, um, some of the advisories had some conversations about it, um, as kids asked questions, to teachers and, and shared their experience. I was, uh, observing online, um, an eighth grade class today that, uh, is doing some work, uh, studying the Holocaust. And, um, you know, uh, that was touched on too. So I think we, we, you know, we had those conversations sort of, uh, occur organically in classes, depending on what curriculum was going on at the time and how they connected to, um, studies that, um, you know, uh, teachers are doing with kids, but especially in history and social studies, um, definitely came up. I know when I talked to my, uh, sixth grader and eighth grader, um, they said that they spent some time today, which, um, is great.
Oh, good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Miller shared.
That was my impression as well.
Good, great. And Mr. Miller shared some, um, strategies with his staff on how best to, um, communicate and respond to questions. So there, there were lots of, um, approaches to, um, making sure that people felt if they wanted to speak or, or, um, share their feelings, they had the opportunity to do so.
Thank you so much.
Charles, did you want to add to that or?
That, no, that sums it up perfectly.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a student spotlight today?
So I tried, Mr. Miller gave me a lovely suggestion and, um, in the essence of time, I, um, sent, I don't know if it'll work. I tried it, the Happy New Year video made by our district PR coordinator. Um, and I sent it to your email directly as a surprise for you to see at home in case you haven't had a chance to see it. So that'll be, um, hopefully in your inboxes if I did it right. So, um, that's your student spotlight for tonight.
Thank you. Now, number five.
Everyone's going to check their inboxes before everybody talks.
Uh, it's not now, it's later, much later.
Do it now. We got business to do. Uh, public comment?
Stephanie Graham's hand is raised.
Oh, okay, Stephanie?
Hello. I'll put my video on. Hi. So I just wanted to, um, commend elementary Spanish teacher, Susanna Mattstone, because it, uh, she is one of those teachers who did address the events at the Capitol Building yesterday. And I only know this because my daughter is in her class. And this, I wanted to mention this specifically because this is something that they're kind of learning about now in fifth grade, talking about the revolution and how it's tied to that. But, um, I just actually also hope this is the kind of educational engagement that she's getting at school. And I was really happy to hear that she did. I think it's all a teacher's responsibility to engage in this dialogue. I think not only to use it as reason to discuss important issues, but also, um, to address the law, constitution, democracy, and all those things that we should all know about. So anyway, it's like a, congratulations to her and to all the teachers that did participate in the dialogue. Um, I don't think it's easy for students to open up organically about this kind of topic because they just might not know enough about it to feel comfortable doing so, um, not in all classes anyway. And I think teachers do need a little bit more training perhaps on how to engage in that kind of discussion. Especially because they're sensitive issues. And, um, speaking of anti-bias, anti-racist strategies, this is the kind of work that needs to be done, you know, for, in PD for them. I, I think it's timely. Um, the second thing I wanted to say is, uh, regarding that land acknowledgement conversation in the beginning, I, I remember from last month that, um, there was somebody who wanted to move to motion or I'm not sure of the process, but then there was somebody who said, well, maybe we should look into how to actually implement this as a policy officially instead of just voting on it. And I just happen to know that I don't think there is an official way to implement it as a policy. Like unless you want to just write it into policy that's saying this is actually what we're going to say in the beginning of school meetings, um, I don't think there's any sort of, um, state rule or governing body that tells you yes or no, you can't do it.
Oh, yeah.
That's all for me.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Yep.
All right, um, we're going on to item six, Curriculum and Professional Development Coordinator's Report. And I, I think I saw Amy here.
She is.
Yes, I am here. Um, thank you. It's great to be here tonight. And hear this conversation and, and, um, Stephanie had a perfect lead in to one of the things that I want to share. I know someone mentioned the PLC. I'm not sure if there's a piece about this in your packet, but if not, um, the email that I sent today, which was largely written by Nancy, um, Doherty, special educator at the elementary school, and Stephanie Graham, who just spoke. Uh, they'll be facilitating two consecutive PLCs. So one that's mostly in place January and February, a little bit of March. And then Stephanie's, the second one takes place in March and April. Um, each PLC, professional learning community is an inquiry-based, uh, process that, um, will focus on, uh, diversity and culturally responsive pedagogy. So there's a, they wrote, and I won't try to capture exactly what they wrote, but they wrote a really beautiful introduction to what those PLCs will be about. And I'm, if Beth hasn't shared it with you, I'm sure she will. That went out today. The first PLC is going to focus primarily on family voices and some of the reasons why family voices might not get heard and ways to, um, work, you know, implement different practices around that. And then the second PLC focuses more on underrepresented voices in the curriculum. And so those details will be forthcoming if you don't have them in front of you right now. Excited about that. We also have the anti, the Anti-Defamation League coming on the nineteenth. They were originally planned for March, the day that school ended up being, released for COVID. Uh, that PD has now, will now be virtual and it will be a half-day PD instead of the full day. And it will take place on the nineteenth for all faculty, staff. I, I believe, um, Beth has reached out to even bus drivers. Everyone is invited, um, for that. So we're looking forward to that. The last thing I want to touch upon is the Curriculum Committee continues to meet. Um, we're continuing to, uh, look at what are the texts, the required texts. And a piece of that, um, work will, will be around that culturally responsiveness. Are we requiring texts, you know, that, that embrace all cultures and all voices? So that's where we are with that right now. We'll meet again in January. And then I'm just going to turn this over to Julie Dolan, who is working on the Curriculum Committee with me and working closely with me on the math program, uh, looking into getting a new math program. So Julie, do you want to say something about that?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. We've been working on finding math programs to, um, evaluate and see if they are the correct fit for our district and our students. One of the resources that we use to select, um, math programs to look at and have presented by the companies was EdReports, which is a nonprofit that, um, uses a specific rubric to score, uh, educational programs for all content areas. And, uh, we are fortunate that we have gotten to this point where this month we will have two companies presenting to, um, all of our staff that are interested in learning more about them. So we are moving right along.
Thanks.
I see Mr. Sears has his hand up, Madam Chair.
I just had.
And also Art.
Okay, so Dennis first then.
And also Jeff.
I just had a quick question to, to Amy or if she's not there.
I just had a quick question to, to Amy, or if she's not there, you know, Beth may have the answer as well. The PLCs, have we come up with a fixed number of PLCs? Or I, I, maybe I know this and it's just dribbled out of my brain, but have we?
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, have, have, we, so it's still in the development stage in terms of, we don't know whether we're going to end up with three PLCs or 20, right?
No, there were 20. Um, when we looked at that in the budget, you know, we pay a stipend for people to facilitate the PLC. It takes after school. Um, so there's a limited number that we can offer. I don't, there could possibly be one other PLC after this. I, I'm not right now looking at that. I'm focused on these two and launching these two. Stephanie and Nancy, um, really were very thoughtful. Um, they spent a lot of time even just preparing to facilitate these two PLCs above and beyond, you know, what my expectations would have been or what they're being paid for with that stipend. So a lot of work goes into that. I'm hoping that there'll be a lot of teachers that participate in that. It's not the end-all, be-all. We need to continue that work. You know, I don't want to speak for, for Nancy, but I will say, I mean, she's already thinking about what's the next thing? What's the next step? Um, she's already identified a book that she's interested in, in working with teachers around. That's a little bit of a different, um, type of PD than an inquiry-based, um, professional learning community. But it's, it's another form of PD that's known to be quite effective. So we're going to just keep crafting the right PD at the right time in the best way that we can and building our internal expertise.
Thank you. Um, I don't, I'm not sure who's first, Jeffrey or Carrie Anne?
I've spoken. Carrie Anne can speak.
Okay, Carrie Anne?
Thank you. Um, Amy, thank you so much for your report. I'm, I'm curious about a few things that you mentioned in terms of, well, first, um, I'm really glad to hear about looking at underrepresented voices as part of these PLCs. And I'll be really curious to, as the school committee continues to deepen our work in anti-racism and anti-bias, to see how that can all fold together and that there can be opportunities for it to be a unified process across the district. In that, you had mentioned sort of looking at text for cultural responsiveness. I think it's about what conversations are happening around specifically the myth of Thanksgiving and some of the, the harms that are created by us teaching that. And particularly as we're having this conversation of a land acknowledgement in terms of the Bohegan people, just trying to create some deeper accountability about, um, the truth of, from the Native American perspective of what happened in the first Thanksgiving and how the district is holding that.
Right. So we haven't done anything specific, like I haven't worked with anyone specifically around that issue unless they've come to me to discuss it. It hasn't been a targeted focus, but I don't disagree with you. I mean, I think there's work to be done there. I think that has to be part of our entire curriculum review process. And, and while, you know, you captured it so beautifully, it sounds so simple to, you know, just make a, a change in the curriculum. It isn't that simple. Um, it requires some training. It requires that we take some time that we haven't had as we've been trying to get people up with technology and running with technology they've never used before, to now also add a lot of curriculum changes at the same time. So we'll get there. It's, I'm not dismissing it. It's absolutely important and, you know, that various teachers have various experiences on how comfortable they are with bringing in indigenous voices, um, in that situation. So we need to get more people to feel more comfortable and have a greater background. So I don't have an easy answer for that, but I, I, I agree with everything that you said. It's very important.
All right. Um, and then back to Jeffrey. Did you want to say something?
First, Dr. Lynn and Julie, um, thank you very much for your work. This is by far the most exciting part of the meeting every week. So, um, but Julie, I have a question for you. What are the, um, likely shortlist candidates for the math programs for the school district?
The, the ones that are being presented this month is Ready Math. And another one that is being presented this month is Into Math. Unfortunately, so many of the programs sound very similar. It's kind of hard to keep it straight. But, um, that's just who's presenting this month. And depending upon the reaction from, and feedback from staff will decide where we go from there.
And this is based on your criteria using the Ed Reports to kind of help narrow that down and prioritize. This is the first batch. If it doesn't hit it, then you'll proceed to the next group. Okay. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, so Bonnie?
Just, uh, quickly on that whole issue of Thanksgiving, there was a lot of work done over at New Marlboro Central about two years ago or three years ago, addressing this. Because in, in many ways, and they involved a lot of parents and maybe Charles can, I, I think it was the year before he came here, I'm sure. They did a great, number one, they did a great job. Number two, I know they presented information to us on what they did. So I'm sure it hasn't died that perhaps Charles can get the information and we don't have to go back to step one.
Yeah, thanks, Bonnie. I, I wasn't here at, at that time, but I know.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah. No, I know I've, you're reminding me that I had some conversations with Lynn Webster about some of that work previously. But it's, it's, it's not consistent. I mean, I would be untruthful to say to you that it's consistent across the district and everyone's approaching it by bringing in all voices. I don't know that that's, you know, I haven't audited that. I don't know that that is absolutely what's happening. My guess would be in my 25 years' experience in education, probably not. Very unlikely here and very unlikely anywhere. Um, I think getting everybody on the same page with all of those traditions, um, is a big challenge. It's a bigger challenge than it, than it might sound like.
And I'm just hoping that you wouldn't have to start at the beginning by going, dealing, because they went through a lot. As a matter of fact, um, Odie's mom, Kenzie, was involved with it to a great extent. Kenzie Field.
Yeah, I made a note of that, Bonnie. I appreciate it.
Okay, great.
Out to them, um, as we kind of cycle back towards the fall. Absolutely.
All right.
I just want to be clear about one thing in terms of, of articulating that, um, that I'm not necessarily advocating for, um, bringing in all the potential traditions that are associated with Native American cultures into the curriculum, but more of a specific analysis of where there are, are lies being told in the curriculum in regards to Native American history. And especially as, you know, we have loosely acknowledged, you know, the, the, you know, essentially the, the storming of the Capitol yesterday and a major shock to our democracy. Being able to speak truth is very important. And as Bonnie mentioned in the beginning, equipping our students for their greatest achievement with the truth going out into the world is very important. And that's the perspective that I'm coming from, not necessarily integrating the diversity of Native American traditions into the curriculum.
I, thank you for saying that. I, I didn't think that's what you were, I, you know, I completely did understand what you were, what you were saying. So if I confused your message, you know, paraphrasing it back, I apologize because I did, I did understand. Early in my career, it was a passion of mine, actually. So I worked with Primary Source in Watertown and was a consulting educator for them. They're a fabulous organization that does, you know, their focus, the only thing they do, um, is professional development for embedding exactly what you're talking about into teachers' curriculum. And they work with teachers to, to do that and have been doing work, working with teachers for probably 30 years doing that. So I hear you loud and clear and you're right. You know, it's true. It's, it, I know that when I did this on my own, it was something that I, I had to read a lot about. I had to start reading, you know, about King Philip's War, things that I had never learned myself in school. They weren't even taught to me in college. Um, so there's a lot for people to learn. And it challenges some of their basic assumptions about, you know, using Thanksgiving as an example, what that holiday might mean to them. So it just takes, I, I hate that it takes time, but it does take time. And, and we've had, um, we've really needed to focus the beginning this fall on getting people up and running with technology and being able to, um, implement any kind of teaching and learning while students weren't able to be in school. But it's a competing, it's certainly a competing priority and it is important.
Thank you very much, Amy. I'm wondering, uh, we have the business manager's report. Uh, I noticed that Peter and, um, Taylor and Lucy Prashker are waiting. Um, and they're not until, uh, item nine. So after the business manager's report, um, I would like to move.
Art has a question.
Art, yes?
Yes, um, just one thing for Julie. Um, is the, the new math curriculum K through 12?
Uh, we're looking for a program that's K through eight that aligns with what, um, our math teachers do at the high school level. So the math teachers from the high school are also helping us in the search.
Okay, cause I'm, I haven't been a fan of Go Math. I don't think it, it ended up being where we need it to be. So I'm hopeful that this new look, um, makes us more K through 12 math oriented. That's all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, a motion to adjust the agenda to, um, have Lucy and Peters and the, um, business manager handle before the other or as the chair sees fit.
Second.
Roll call vote. Um, Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes, I forgot I had to unmute.
Art?
Yes.
And Jane. Um, yeah, so I'm going to have the business report, which I think is probably short. Uh, and then, um, go to item nine A, which is, um, our guest's proposal and, um, then go back to new business. All right. So Chris?
Okay, uh, thank you very much. So yes, I will have a short report tonight. Basically, all I have is the warrants report for you. And this warrants report is only, it's three items, basically. I know the prior reports that I've been bringing have had more warrants, but at this point in time, we're pretty much caught up to date. So they'll be a little bit smaller from now on. We had a little backlog of them to bring to you. Uh, but we have three warrants, um, for your approval tonight. The first is, uh, from the end of October, it was a P card payment of about six, oh, close to $17,000. Another one from December 11th of just under $500,000, of which almost half of that was a retirement payment that we made. And then we had another one dated 12/25, but I can't really imagine that somebody was here on Christmas putting it together. That must have just been the, the posting date in the general ledger. Uh, and that one was for $163,000. And of that, just under $106,000 was a tuition payment, uh, that would be paid out of the 240 sped tuition grant.
To approve the warrants for January 7th, 2021 is presented. Second.
Okay, so we have, uh, Jeffrey and Dennis seconding. Are there any questions for Chris? All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Jane, yes. Okay, so now we're going to turn it over to, um, Representatives, uh, the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Regional School District Planning Board, who we asked to return with a proposal. And one of the glitches here is that we didn't get any documents in time to put into the, uh, packet. So you didn't have your usual 48 hours to look at things. So I, I think we have to do some screen sharing of some sort so that you can see it. Cause I did not see it. Uh, I was out and about today, so I don't have it. I mean, I could open it in my email, but I'm not a, I, I'm not in charge of the screen here. How are we going to pull this off?
I can do, are you okay, Lucy, if I share it with you? And you can put up your chart. Is that okay?
Yeah.
I'll make you a, a co-host for now. Or I'll just make you the host and call it a night.
Well, I can share my screen without you making me a host.
You can, because we, we have to do it that way here. So I made you, I made you a co-host, so you're, you're ready to go.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Thank you for giving us a little bit of time tonight. I know you've got a really busy and packed schedule. So I'm here with my co-chair, Peter Taylor, uh, of the Regional School District Planning Board. And as you may remember, um, from November, when I, I came to you for the first time, we're looking for, uh, some bridge funding from, um, you, from the Southern Berkshire Regional School Committee, to help us with our work while we wait for more significant funding from the eight-member towns that make up the regional, uh, board and, um, maybe other funding sources. And when I was here in November, you asked to see sort of a detailed budget of how this bridge funding would be used. Um, and that's what we put together for you. Uh, this budget was developed by a subcommittee of the planning board, the Funding Source Subcommittee. And it's been reviewed by them and approved by them. So I'm going to share my screen. Okay, can you see it?
Yes.
All right, great. So this bridge funding is designed to take us from January, through June 30. And the budget we put together for that period assumes that we don't get any really significant funding from either the towns or the state during this period. And I'll speak a little bit more about that in a moment. But our plan right now is to go to the towns in the next month or two to try and get, uh, some money included in their respective budgets for the next, next fiscal year. So the earliest we could get that town money would be, uh, July of this year. And so we need some money to sort of get us from, from now to then, in terms of just sort of bare bones operation. So the first category is project management slash facilitation. To help facilitate the process of, um, our three subcommittees engaging in productive dialogue, coordinating that work, uh, and managing, helping to manage the task of looking for outside consultants, talking to those consultants, getting, uh, estimates from those consultants in response to RFPs, et cetera. So very modest, uh, budget here, 20 hours a, a month. We've got four meetings a month, so that's only five hours per meeting, at a blended rate of about a hundred dollars an hour. That's a monthly expense of $2,000 a month over the six-month period. That would be $12,000. Administrative support, we've had no administrative support since July. And we need that. We need someone to help with putting the agendas up on websites, you know, responding to requests from our 24 board members for things they need. Hopefully, having some ability to have that administrative support, serve in a minute-taking role, just the general kind of administrative support that any public body requires to keep going. So 10 hours a month for that. Again, that's a very modest request in terms of the amount of work that it really takes to keep this board going every month at a rate of 25 an hour. That's 250 a month. That's 1,500 over the six-month period. We haven't had legal counsel since, again, July of this year. We've had need for it. I've had to serve in that role, which I don't like to do because I think it's good to have outside legal counsel advising on questions that board members raise rather than the chair. So $300 a month, it's about two hours of work a month, $300 a month over the six-month period. That's $1,800. And then the final item here is webpage development. We've been using a webpage at Berkshire Hills as our official posting site. And there've been some difficulties with that just because it's actually a lot of work to get all these agendas posted and minutes posted and reports posted. And it's sort of an unfair intrusion on the work of the assistant to Peter Dillon. And so part of this administrative support that we're looking for would be doing that posting of the agendas and posting of the minutes and posting of the reports on our own website, our own webpage that we would have control over. So webpage development, we have an estimate there of $1,500. Beth thought that was a little low, but that's what we've got there. We're hoping that will do it. So the total six-month expense bridge budget is $16,800. We don't have that. We did get $3,000 from Berkshire Hills Regional School District. We're asking for $3,000 from you, Southern Berkshire. And we were successful in getting a grant from BTCF, which is gonna help with the facilitation part of this budget. It's very specific to facilitation work. And that's 2,500. So we, if, if we get the 3,000 from you, we'll have 8,500 of the 16,8, which is a little bit more than half. And we'll have to find the rest somewhere else or cut down even a bit more on this budget until we can find another funding source. One thing I wanted to mention, but I don't think I mentioned at the last meeting, was that with the initial money we got from the state, which is now all gone, we did pay for the NESDEC fees on behalf of Southern Berkshire Regional School District. So we paid with that initial $50,000 we got from the state, we paid $7,200 to NESDEC on behalf of Southern Berkshire Regional School District to get enrollment numbers and some demographic information that I believe that you, you now have or you have a draft of or. So it, it's valuable information to you, your committee, completely separate and apart from the work that we're doing as a Regional School District Planning Board. So I just wanted to mention that. So again, that's the request. I know your budget is tight. I, I really appreciate that and understand it. Even more important than the amount is sort of a show of support by this committee of the planning board's work. The planning board, as you know, includes five members of this committee. And they've been doing amazing work and putting in a tremendous number of hours. And we do need the support to, to keep our work going in a productive way. And if I could just yield, yield the floor for a couple of minutes to Peter. I'd like him to speak to, to that point in particular.
Thank you, Lucy. And also thank you to, to the school board for having us tonight. And as I look across the screen to, to the five members here that are colleagues on the planning board, it's great to work with you. You know, Lucy, I think you covered, you know, so, so much in, of, of the importance of this. And I would just, you know, add that, and I think the five members on this school board would concur that we're really at an important juncture of this work. We've been at this since February. We're a volunteer board, 24 people. And we have done a lot of work to create some norms and abilities to work together as well as organize around committees so we can really dig in and investigate the feasibility and the desirability of, of different ways that the school districts can work together towards enhancing educational quality and efficiency. And as we look forward to this bridge period, as Lucy describes, we need some help. And we're fortunate that we are going to be able to apply again to the state. They have put aside some running and they are obviously key stakeholders in this process that we're doing on behalf, behalf of, of kids and parents and communities. We're also gonna be going to the towns, which obviously are important stakeholders to this process as one of the most important things we do as communities, as town government, is support local education. And so we're also coming to you. And we're coming to you right now because of the ability of the district above the town that has to bring budget expenditures to town meeting and the state that has allocation processes. The school districts have a degree of more flexibility to, to help the, 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 the planning board at this juncture to be able to have, you know, fairly modest resources to be able to maximize the productivity of the committee at an important juncture where we're really in the midst of, of some investigation that's going to, you know, serve again, you know, the towns, the school board and, and kids and parents in the community. So we hope that you will see the value as we do of this $3,000 contribution from Southern Berkshire that can be joined with Berkshire Hills to help us through this period. So thank you.
I see Carrie Anne. Is this hand up currently or is that left over from before? Okay, Carrie Anne, if you have a question?
You have questions? Thank you so much. I'm curious about in terms of the project management line item of your proposal. It's unclear to me, as Peter just mentioned, you all are a volunteer board. So I'm not curious, I'm curious, who's gonna get paid for project management if you all are volunteers?
An outside project manager, not a member of the board.
And so this is all a budget that is for a consultant to project manage you all?
To project manage what?
You and your board.
No, no, and project manage the work that we need to engage from a number of consultants. So for example, the subcommittees have identified a number of consultants that we're gonna need to engage to develop the data necessary to look at whether consolidation is feasible. So with the first round of funding, we engaged MARS, Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools. And they put together a very robust report on sort of baseline operations in both districts. We're gonna need a feasibility study. We're gonna need to engage outs, an outside consultant to do feasibility studies. We're gonna need to engage someone to do a transportation study. The Educational Quality Subcommittee has determined it would be desirable to engage an outside expert to do a search of national data respecting best practices in educational, in the educational space.
I understand all of the need for the additional reports, but I'm just confused about the money that you're asking for still is because it's not clear to me the scope of work of what you're asking for. Cuz here is, could you please show your screen again since we weren't able to look at this budget ahead of time? It's, so then are you looking to hire multiple people, the, for the, obviously, so then the legal counsel is one person, is the administrative person another position? And then the third position being the project manager?
The modest amount here for project management and facilitation, the 20 hours a month, would be used to pay an outside person to attend the four meetings a month and to help facilitate productive dialogue and discussion at that meeting, those meetings and coordinate that work. In addition, because there needs to be a lot of coordination among the three subcommittees. In addition, if there's time left over in those 20 hours a month, I would hope that that person would be able to help to identify and contact possible outside consultants to do the heavy lift work that's gonna cost a lot more money, like tens of thousands of dollars, the feasibility study, the transportation study, the educational study. But you have to identify possible consultants. You have to contact them. You have to get budgets from them. And that all takes a lot of work. And that's the project management side of this piece. Putting that all together and bringing to the planning board lists of possible consultants to gather the data that the subcommittees have identified as necessary to do this work.
Thank you.
All right, so then Jeff, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Lucy and Peter, thank you for presenting. I, I think you both know that I, I think this is important work for us to be doing to be able to deliver back to the towns what they've asked us to do. I'm gonna caveat my comments on a, a couple of things that I think is, is concerning to me about this ask. I think that we should be looking at the projects now, if we're asking for money in a larger frame of like the total cost of all consultants and what we think this project's gonna look like. Get reasonable expectations of how many months, years this might take to be able to do a good job and get good data and not do this piecemeal. I feel very uncomfortable with this proposed budget because this is just gonna get us down the road six months. And we don't even know what we're asking the towns yet when it comes to town meeting. And I, I still come back to this is that the towns insisted upon this process that was outside of what the school committees have by statute, what they could do. And now you're asking us to finance something and I don't feel like it's clearly determined out. And then my last concern is that you're presenting numbers that are approved by the finance committee, but it has not come to the full board. And I don't think the full board has actually even commented on it. And so the, the full board being the, the planning board, not our committee. So I, I'm wondering if it's possible that we could maybe slow down and before annual meetings, work within the three subcommittees of what we think and allow our, our volunteers to do the work that needs to be done to just like, what is the full wish list and kind of create a skeleton of the overall project? Because I don't wanna come back in six months having you guys coming back or the, the board coming back, not you guys, the board coming back saying we need more gap funding. This is, you were in the same room with me, Lucy, in Alford, two years ago, when the budget was voted down. And it, it's a very hard process to get this pushed through. And what we're, we're still in a pandemic. We still have scores of kids who are living on the edge or below the edge because of this pandemic and families not being able to work. And $3,000, we don't know if that's a lot of money right now for, even though it's a small ask, it seems. It can mean the world of difference for some of the families in our district. And I hope that we can reconsider the way that we approach this and be more strategic and look at the whole project and then seeing how the school district can be an assistant to, to help this. But I, I just, I, I have quite a few reservations about this at this time.
All right, may I respond to that, Jane?
No, I'm just gonna let all the questions come out first, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Dennis, I'm recognizing you now.
Okay, I'm now even unmuted, so. Here, here's what I would like to propose. Basically, you know, what we've seen tonight is a very summary sheet of the request for the money's going and so forth. I would like to propose that, you know, one of the problems that exists is that this is a, a body that was set in place with nobody putting any money in anybody's budget for it. Okay, I don't believe that any of the towns put any money in their budgets for this year to support the planning board. We know we didn't have any money in our budget to support the planning board. And both ourselves and the towns, I think, all understand, you know, this is a tough year. We don't even know how tough the year is going to be. We don't even know how tough, you know, the next year is going to be. And, and what I suggest we do is, you know, I, I personally would like to see us look at a lot more of the details behind what their plan is. And perhaps what I would like to make is, is a motion is that we ask them to come back for a longer meeting with the finance committee. And we'll ask the, the superintendent to also sit in where we can actually try to get into the details and figure out what the impacts would be on our budget if we also make some assumptions on what we would have to put in the budget that will have to go to the towns then for the next year to include whatever it is we're gonna put in this thing. So that would be my motion that I would like to make at this point in time. It's, I, I know that's a lot of words in it for a motion, but that's my, let me just roll it out as a suggestion for right now.
All right, Bonnie?
Right, a couple of things. One, Peter, if you could answer the question of what, what was it specifically that was given to Southern Berkshire as a result of paying the dues? Was that all the data we received regarding performance? And did it have anything to do with the building study, et cetera? What was it that we obtained?
No, it was the NESDEC fees. I'm sure Beth can speak to it. We paid the Southern Berkshire NESDEC fees. And as a result of that, you guys got pretty valuable enrollment and demographic data for your school.
Okay, and you had to do this in order to get what you needed to?
We thought it would be useful to our work. Yeah, we thought it would be useful to our work.
Okay.
As well.
All right. To be fair, just, you know, Berkshire Hills, it is, it is a big membership fee. And for a district our size, we used to do it, I believe, someone, people who've been here longer could comment on that. But we used to do that. And it's one of the things with our size and our budget constraints that we chose to not do every year as a result because it is such a big number. So they are a member every year. So in order to compare apples to apples, that's why, you know, this was a discussion. And again, I, we had to budget it for it, 72, 7200.
Okay, all right. So that's, that's an important factor there. I have a lot of the reservations that Jeff brought up because because I know, being on the education subcommittee, we know that money, we've, that was one of the things we reported out is that we know we will need money for gathering data to make sound decisions. And we have to go out into all of the communities to be able to get information from the families, et cetera. So we know there are other costs that we're facing, as Jeff pointed out. And I know that's a big one in terms of the education committee. But have either of you, Peter or Lucy, spoken to any of our eight town fathers and mothers to get a sense of receptivity? Because as Dennis pointed out, it's going to be a really, really hard sell. So do you have a sense of where the towns are on this issue?
Okay, if I could just speak to process here, I think I'll address your question and Jeff's question.
Okay.
So the planning board delegated to the Funding Source Subcommittee the task of putting not just this budget together for you, which you asked for, this bridge funding budget, but the bigger budget. The budget that will get the work done, including all of those reports that we're going to be presenting to the eight-member towns in the next couple of months. That bigger budget is going to be presented to the full planning board next Tuesday for discussion, review, and approval, if it's acceptable. That was put together by the Subcommittee that the Planning Board delegated this task to. The $3,000 ask to you was approved by the Planning Board when they delegated to the Subcommittee the job of putting together the bridge funding budget. So the $3,000 ask has been approved by the full planning board. And the budget that we put together for you tonight was reviewed and approved over two or three meetings by the Funding Source Subcommittee. Beth was at all those meetings. Peter Dillon was at the meetings. I believe, Jane, you were at those meetings, as was Peter Taylor and the chairs of our three subcommittees, our Educational Quality Subcommittee, our Finance Committee Subcommittee, and our Operations Committee Subcommittee. So in terms of process, there's been an awful lot of process that has gone into putting this bridge funding budget before you tonight. And there's been a lot of process to put together the larger budget, which we're not going to come back to the Subcommittee, this school committee, to fund. But that's going to be discussed at an open meeting of the Planning Board on Tuesday. So I think that should address the process concerns. In terms of how the towns are going to react, Jeff, I don't know. And Dennis, I don't know. But what I do know, because I remember that meeting very well, Jeff, when for the first time in the history of the town of Alford, the, the school budget was voted down over my vociferous objection, which I think you and Beth will both recall. And the reason, one of the main reasons that budget was voted down in the town of Alford, the town that has always been the most supportive of this school budget every year that I have lived in Alford, which is many, many years. The reason was that they didn't feel that there'd been sufficient attention paid to the possibility of consolidation. And so I think, at least in the town of Alford, the fact that we're doing this work is going to be something that's going to be very helpful to the Southern Berkshire Regional School District when they go back to the town in May and ask for that budget to be approved. Because we can say, when that budget proposal is presented to the town residents, we are studying consolidation. We're putting a lot of energy and resources behind studying consolidation. We're not ignoring you. We're not ignoring your concerns. And we're asking you to join in this effort by supporting the work of the planning board. So I think it actually will be a very easy sell, at least in the town of Alford, Jeff, to get whatever it is we ask of that town. And we'll see if it's an easy sell in the other towns. If it's not, if they're not interested in this work, then we're going to shut it down. Right? If the towns don't want us to do this work, we're going to shut it down. So I, I, I think the proof will be in the pudding when we go to the towns with our larger requests for over $100,000 to fund this work. In terms of whether you guys have the money to spare in your budget, that's, you know, that's your, your decision. I, I will completely understand if you say, you know, we just can't find $3,000. We support your work, but we can't find $3,000. I get it. But the process has been robust. The effort is sincere. Everything is transparent. We made the request of Berkshire Hills. We've got to make the request of you. And if you can't do it, you can't do it. But take the vote, make the decision, and let us move on with the work that we're doing to try and raise whatever funds we can to get us through this bridge period.
So are there any other questions before we entertain a motion?
I would just, you know, it's hard to follow, you know, Lucy's.
Peter, I'm going to cut you off. Our meeting is going over. I think you've had a really fair amount of time to make your case. And now I'd like to hear from my committee members if they have any further questions. Because the night is getting late. So is there anyone else who has something that they want to have clarified?
Jeff has his hand up.
Okay, Jeff, that's not, okay. Jeff?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
All right. Dennis, is that okay with you? Or do you want to speak before the motion is made?
I'd like to make just one more comment that, yes, I, you know, again, I'm strongly in the belief that since this was never included in our budget, that until we go through some analysis, which again, I would recommend would be the function of the finance committee to spend the time focused on that, of really understanding what the impact is on us. You know, that's, you know, that's my whole position.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. I'm ready to entertain your motion.
I appreciate Dennis's comments about needing to understand the impact and whatnot. I, I think part of where I'm hung up on, when I'm speaking to this first, is I think we're asking for the money without, I want to see what the full committee comes out of that discussion in the Regional Hills School Committee. So I'd like to propose that we withhold off on voting tonight on the funds and to reconvene after the full regional school district planning board has had a chance to vote on the Subcommittee plan that is done and then come back and then look at this.
So.
I'll second that.
Okay, so let's summarize your motion so it's, it can be written easily by Lynette.
I would like us to not vote tonight on the granting of the funds, but rather to wait until the school planning board of the eight towns and 24 members has a chance to vote as a full committee on the plan, the budget that has been presented from the finance committee. Let's reconvene after that.
So that would be our, at your, our next meet, it would be on our agenda for the next meeting. Is that what you're saying?
Or if we schedule another?
I, I don't, I'm not in favor of scheduling a special meeting.
Then the next one.
Which would be?
Negotiable because we have some.
We don't know, we're setting our calendar. Okay, is there a second to Jeff's motion? Was that, Dennis, did you second it? Okay, so we'll have a roll call vote on Jeff's motion not to vote to approve the money until our meeting after the planning board's meeting next Tuesday. Right? That's what we're voting on? Okay, so Hannah?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bonnie?
No.
Janice?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Art?
Sorry, yes.
Okay, John?
Yes.
Danell?
Yep.
Mary Ann?
Yep.
And Jane, yes, I'll go along with the majority. So you will have an answer from us. I can't tell you that our next meeting date because that's the next agenda item because we're switching our meeting dates possibly. Thank you for coming and giving us a full explanation. And since we didn't get the grant from Berkshire to Conic, we have some work that we had hoped we could do that we may not be able to do now. So you understand our situation. I appreciate your sensitivity to our how, what a slight increase we had in our budget this year. And we're trying to get through with quite a sparse budget. Thank you.
Yeah, completely understand.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right. Now we are going to, back to the new business to try to sort out this multicolored document that we have. At our prior meeting, we decided that we were going to try to meet twice a month or every two weeks. And we needed Beth and Lynette to look at the calendar and give us a proposal of how that might look and for us to consider whether we agree with it or not. So I hope you have it in color because the color coding is very helpful.
So if I can just add, I think the directive was to look at adding additional opportunities for business meetings, not necessarily a specific twice a month or, you know, because we had a schedule in place already for half the year. So, and in an effort to kind of go along with working to define our schedule as a school committee and just our meeting schedule in general, trying to pin that down and make it easier for people to schedule and support and be present at. So the one thing that I do want to point out with the way this schedule is, and maybe because of the pandemic, it won't be as big of an issue. We typically do not attempt to schedule meetings during the vacation weeks. But because of the way the schedule is laid out and because it would have caused either back-to-back meetings because of the way in March we have to have the meetings on the 4th and the 11th by the regional agreement. We did leave it right now, I just want to point it out to people, as the 4th of February and the 18th, which is during school vacation week. So I want to highlight that. And if people don't want that, that's okay. It was just the way it fell. And I didn't know if that would be an issue in this particular situation. So just throwing that out there. I think everything else is fairly straightforward.
Yeah, I'd like to add that one of the reasons for this is so that we are meeting, we can have, spread out the important issues into meetings so that we don't have to meet for more than two hours on an average basis and that we won't have two important issues on the same meeting as much as possible. So I was assuming that, that this committee would, we would lay out a tentative calendar of what important things would be in each meeting.
Well.
Tonight, but.
So again, this is baby steps towards what I believe the goal of the entire committee was, which would be going forward to have a yearly calendar laid out once we get through this, the remainder of this year. So we could identify that based on, you know, the work that we've done this year. Like we know when our school improvement plans need to be, our district improvement plans evaluations, you know. And so then we can fill in and look at that as a body, maybe in our summer work that we do as the school committee retreat, plan out that whole year. So everybody's very clear on what we all agree our expectations of what we'd like to see could look like in, in a meeting schedule.
Okay, so probably the most efficient thing would be if somebody would make a motion to approve this and then we can go back in and see what people want to change. So are you making a motion to approve there, Jonathan?
Yes, I moved to approve the revised 2021 calendar, school committee calendar as presented.
A second.
A second from Janice? All right, now I'd like to hear any discussion.
Yes, I had some discussion and, you know, but it's fine. One of the questions I wanted to ask the superintendent is that, you know, we were adding on this schedule, you know, two, two new meeting days in April. And that's kind of the, that April, correct me if I'm wrong, Beth, but, you know, April is probably one of the busiest times during the budget process leading up to, you know, town meetings and so forth. Are, do those, have you kind of taken that into consideration on how you pick those days?
Well.
I, I mean, I never can remember exactly, but, you know, some things are due at certain X days before other days.
Right, so really the only ones statutorily or by, or by regional agreement are the, the 4th and the 11th of March.
Oh, right, okay, yeah. And also it goes back into March even a little bit, yeah.
Yeah. So I think, again, trying to do the every other week. Or what's interesting, I'm just looking at her, for April, I think she put school, she had school committee meetings stay, maybe, maybe those had to stay in there. I don't, normally the green is school committee removed. So I'm, April has two days where it says school committee stay, but she had the two days in March. I'm wondering, and I could be incorrect, but I'm wondering if we really were going to only have the one school committee meeting added and that she meant to say in April that those would be off. Because other than March, those are required days. The rest of them in green are supposed to be removed, if you see what I'm saying?
In tough cases, they say stay. They say stay instead of.
I understand, but I'm saying, I think she made a mistake is what I think.
If we took them out, then we would only have one meeting in April. And it does make me feel, April is a rejuvenation month. And we, those two meetings in March are pretty much devoted to budget hearing. The first one and the second one is budget approval. And maybe we get to one item. So those two meetings in March, we don't do too much other school committee business. And we may well be able to be very productive in April if we meet every other week.
That, yep.
Yeah, well, the other concern I have, which was part of like follow-up question I was going to talk about about it, is that, that, you know, the other thing that I think is still up in the air with, with all five towns is when and if they're going to have their annual town meeting. That's still kind of floating around in the air. And basically, part of the, I think there's some things in the regional agreement as, maybe also in MGL that basically specify, you remember what I'm talking about, Beth, right? In terms of X days before the annual meeting, town meetings, you know, the things that tie to those dates.
And they're here, I'm saying, those are still here, the 4th and the 11th.
Jonathan seems to have something to say on this.
Yeah. I've been using the spacebar to unmute, but now I have to toggle screens and it won't work. So I think the issue, the green means that it was a pre-scheduled school committee meeting. It's already on our schedule. The language is where the removal or the stay happens. So the one, the one, so when you see that. So the one, the one, so when you see that February 11, school committees in green and this has removed, and the others say stay, I think she's just clarifying the stay on the right-hand column that she hadn't clarified in the left-hand column.
Yeah.
But the green, the green is, it's already scheduled. That's what the green signifies. It doesn't signify removal. It signifies it's already currently scheduled.
Thank you for the clarification. That is excellent. We now know what we're looking at.
Let me, let me go back just another piece on that is, would it be worth our time before we finalize the schedule to see if we can get commitments, just, just, just poll and see what the five towns say right now?
I, you know, there's a possibility, I don't think they're going to know. We have the, we have the schedule that, you know, everybody released at the beginning. I don't know if it's going to be the same situation where they say, you know, the towns can do what they did last year and push it out based on what happens with the budget. So I don't know if we should do any or can do any adjusting. We're going to have to follow the regional agreement, right? And then, then we'd have to go back. So we're, we're doing our part by following the regional agreement by continuing our budget work on the fourth and the 11th of March. And then we'll have to think about whether or not we have to make adjustments, depending on what happens in the towns.
Yeah, I mean, we can always, I mean, it's very possible at the last minute, even if they have a annual meeting scheduled, that it may be unscheduled.
Yeah.
I think it would just be worthwhile to at least poll them to say, what are your current plans?
This is their current plan, though.
Oh, that is tied to their.
This is based on their current plan. They haven't made any, any other assumptions yet.
All right, so are we, anything else we need to discuss before we take a vote? Obviously, we can make a change if we need to. And then at least we know what, when our next meeting is this month. So I'll take a roll call vote if there's no other hands up. So what we're voting on is accepting this amended calendar that was presented. Hannah?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Sorry, Art?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Uh, Danell?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
And Jane, yes. Okay, so we have a new calendar. We have fixed the calendar. And now down to nine B with the the latest version of the subcommittees and their duties. One of the things we didn't finish was the we, I think we alluded to that the ad hoc, that the curriculum subcommittee would be ad hoc at when something comes up that we need to deal with, and we have members who would like to participate in that. I'm just going to run down the list and then we'll go back up and talk about things that you, concern you. We have not worked on the liaisons at all and deciding. I think we decided to keep the MAS C liaison and that that has been Dennis, which I have to put in there. And we did talk about executive minute review group. And we have that. We talked about whether we wanted to actually have an ad hoc regional school planning board group. I'm not, and I don't feel like that was resolved. And the liaisons to the various, to the Eagle Fund, to childcare, childhood committee, wellness committee. I don't know what BCETF is.
Berkshire County Educational Task Force.
Oh, well, that doesn't exist.
No, it's there.
Well.
Does it? Oh, it's the big one that, that Jake is working on. Yeah, okay, so let's, can we, raise your hand if you have comments on various aspects of this and we'll see. It is almost eight o'clock, so anything that we can get done quickly would be appreciated.
Is the SPRSD, the Regional School Planning Board, the ad hoc, sorry, it gets so confusing. Is that redundant, like?
That would be sort of formalizing that all of us that are on representing our five towns would consider ourselves a committee to get together with Beth now and again to catch up and, you know, exchange ideas in a more formalized way. Is that right, Beth, or no?
What this originally was, I'm just saying, just so people know, what this originally was, was just a listing of everything that was currently there with an opportunity to discuss whether or not you wanted to keep it as is, change it. So my original thought, my note to all of you was the discussion that said, or do you want to have like a standing report out from this group and the community relations or advocacy group so that our communities could know what kind of work is being done? And, you know, sharing that or getting feedback from our communities. That's where I was going with that. I didn't know if you wanted to form another committee of a, you know, and so I was just throwing that out there as a possible suggestion. That's all this list was. It's what was already there. So this is not set in stone. It's still open to whatever. If there's no name.
I still have my hand up. Can I ask another question? Where I'm a little confused is I didn't think that the curriculum subcommittee was an ad hoc. I thought we, that was
It wasn't.
Formal committee, formal.
It is.
It was not listed in our policy as a formal committee.
That's right.
We had a discussion with, in one of our workshops about whether it, it has, that Beth expressed that it did have value to get committee feedback on various things, but to have it as a standing committee might not be necessary. I remember Jonathan feeling that it didn't need to be a standing committee because we tend to exceed our authority when we make too much messing around in curricular issues. So it, in my memory, we did not decide one way or the other.
Well, it was, I mean, it had been on our, it may not have been in some of the stuff, but it had been on our list. If you go back and look at the annual sheet that we publish.
Yeah, we've had it for two years, I think.
I think we've had it for more than that.
Nope, I started it when I came, so it was, it's, well, three. So, but, but I'm saying this list got changed back because it was referred to policy to only vote on the things that were put, that were in the policy manual. This is trying to get updated so that we can update the policy manual. Curriculum was not one of the ones in the policy manual. Officially.
Yeah, that doesn't mean it shouldn't be there.
I agree, but that, that was my argument on several other committees. I agree, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm going to suggest something because it's now eight o'clock and we've been sitting here for two hours. I don't think we're going to be doing our best thinking. We had, we had asked the policy subcommittee to do some thinking about this and maybe give us some recommendations. I'm, I was hoping if there's anything that we could do quickly, like we don't have liaison to Eagle Fund. Is that something, some of these liaisons, I, we were required to have this liaison to the Eagle Fund because they, in their charter, they have a school committee member sitting on the grants committee. So we need somebody for that, we know.
Well, I thought we had somebody last year, right?
Yeah, but that person isn't on the committee anymore.
Ah, okay.
Um, can I just ask Jane, did, Janice, did the policy committee do get what Beth described?
No, no.
If it wasn't done, I would say, my feeling is we should defer this and not work on it when we're not at our best. And just to let you know, you know, like the Eagle Fund, I think we should fulfill our obligation. And for the new people who don't know, the Eagle Fund Board meets usually three times a year. It's usually early in the morning. And that's, there is a whole agenda there. And in addition, the person also serves, as Jane mentioned, on reviewing the proposals that are submitted to the Eagle Fund for funding. However, this year, because of the pandemic, they have taken a different action with their funding. So I don't think that will probably not have to happen. You probably, you will not have to review, if you volunteer to do this, all of the proposals. But it's just attending the three meetings.
So I, I would, I, I'd just like to go ahead and see if there's somebody who would like to volunteer.
We have hands up all over the place.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Well, I'm not sure if it's for volunteering or for commenting. I'm just saying, there's hands up.
I have hands up for volunteers, not for comments.
Oh, people are going to hurry up and put them down.
Let them go.
Yeah, that was really fast, everybody.
Turn off everybody.
Well, that tells me where we are with that. Okay, well, maybe we'll wait until they bother us. Where's the, where's the person? And then we'll, we'll grab somebody who might be in a more of a mood for it later.
I will volunteer that if you need somebody at any point, because they usually meet in Sheffield at the, at the school. Maybe zooming now.
They're zooming, yeah.
In that case, yeah, I would volunteer.
Yeah, I just, I just started a brand new job and I'm reluctant to volunteer for.
No, no, I'm not guilting anybody. I'm not guilting anybody.
No, that's why I'm saying in the interim, if they're holding a meeting, I, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you very much, Bonnie.
Put your name in capital letters, just so you know, right here.
Don't even.
Uh, okay, is there any other one of these?
The basic of my comment was, let's wait until we hear from policy and not use our.
I just want to see if with these liaisons to childcare or childhood, early childhood, if we want to hold over the people that were doing it last year, or we need to give people more information about what, what's entailed in that so they can volunteer.
Um, Beth, we're probably going to have to meet on, on the childcare. So maybe we should keep, you know, where we are for now.
Yeah, I would, I would, that's Bonnie and, and I are the two people.
Right, exactly.
Right. With, with your permission, I think we'll just hold on to that job for the time being and get you informed over time. Is that too dictatorial? I don't want to.
There are some consistent issues that people were kind of wading into already, and it would serve us to keep the, the institutional knowledge. Am I saying that nicely?
You did very.
Beautifully done, especially at 8:07.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wonderful.
So I'm putting your name in capital letters again, Bonnie.
Yeah, well, I'm just putting your number, name in all the blank spaces.
Yeah, well, Jane, you're the other one, so.
I know, I know. Okay, I think we will say we've covered that item for the item nine B for, for tonight. And then we're getting close to the end here. I think we had our business with the district member towns tonight. I want you to know that it's very likely that the member towns are going to get a lot of money from the state within a couple of months because there's a new RFP and we're really high on the list. That wasn't really. And I'm also doing a little work on trying to get the structure of the committee more defined. So I'm basically trying to represent us as strongly as I possibly can. I've been listening in on extra meetings and being a fly on the wall on your behalf. Now, we don't need hardly any.
Um, John has, I just want.
Oh, John, yeah? No, your, your hand is not up, okay.
Oh my God, stop, no spacebar, yeah.
Okay, so subcommittees, to my knowledge, we don't, we had negotiations, subcommittee meetings, and no others since last meeting. Is that correct?
I'm not, I, I don't think so, right? I don't think we've had any of the other ones. We're just from the, from the break, so probably.
Yeah, I would just want to, I don't think we need to do, there's nothing to report. Bonnie, did you want to say anything about negotiations?
Just for those of you on negotiations, Beth, I just got a note from Michelle. Can you make it five instead of 4:15 on the 14th?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking you because she, she's not going to go to Alex until we say we can.
All right, well, yeah, because I was already scheduled to go at 4:15, so I'll be there, still be there.
You can make it at five.
The, that's fine, I'll still be, yeah.
All right, so for those of you on negotiations, assume that we will be meeting at five o'clock on the 14th. And I've got all my digital, I will get all messages now, five o'clock on the 14th, and it will be changed to Unit A.
I, I'd like to hope that both the superintendent evaluation and the executive minutes review start thinking about when to get together because we've got to get those minutes cleaned up. And we want to think about when we would like to do it, if and when we want to do a midterm check-in with Beth about her goals, seeing as we were a little late in getting them going. It's not quite midway, but I'm just bringing your attention to those committees need to get going and why don't, why don't the chairs of the committees get, I, I was going to try to help with the scheduling of subcommittee meetings so people, members aren't overwhelmed. I'm going to segue into my chairman's report here because I was looking at chairman's roles in a discussion that I had with the chair of another board. And I was reminded that it's my job to try to make your experience on the committee as positive as it possibly can be. We know that you're all extremely busy. You're laughing, Art. And so in order to facilitate people not, especially our working people and our family people, that the meetings are spaced out and scheduled as much on Thursdays as they can be. We know that the finance committee has grabbed some time, but I want you to help me help you as much as possible because I am your servant and I'm trying to make this experience, it's not going to be fun, but easier. Sometimes it's fun, but as easy and productive as possible. So that's my report. And so now did I, oh my gosh, superintendent, do you have a report?
Well, I, of course, there's plenty of things to say, but I will try to keep them brief. So today, the commissioner hopped on at 3:30 today and, and shared a lot of things, so I will use that for the basis of this. So we have gotten a rollout of potential vaccination schedule. So school nurses were moved into phase one, which is anytime now through February. And according to the commissioner today, phase two, which is rather large, February through April, is where educators fall. I don't know what that means any more than what they just said. They said they're waiting. Um, they said they're waiting for what that approach looks like, whether it's gonna be a regional approach, whether, you know, who that specifically is, but. Um, that was one of the things that they talked about today. Um, obviously, there was some information that has been um given out as far as accountability and assessment, meaning the MCAS. Um, tests where um. The approach is really, according to the commissioner, um in his mind, um. Made as um. I I don't know what the word is, but he said he's really only looking to um use the MCAS for diagnostic purposes to. Understand how best to help those who need it the most, and that's how he's approaching looking at MCAS. So wherever he. Has the authority and the ability to minimize testing, he will do that, but he doesn't necessarily have. Um, the authority to say we're not gonna do it at this point. So that was uh what he said today, more to come.
Will you take an interruption on that last one? Did he say anything at all about the Adams Scholarship problem?
No.
So they they still haven't even looked at that, have they?
I doubt it.
I mean, I, I, you know, I left multiple messages and have tried to get everybody else to message the guy that owns that responsibility to make that change. And, you know, nobody's heard anything.
Well, let me just say one of the other interesting topics today, which I think is very telling and and um something that we need to think about is that. Um, they were looking at the FAFSA completion rates, which is obviously the financing for um, you know. Continuing your education in colleges and um naturally, the FAFSA completions are down. Um, anywhere from twenty to percent to as mu- as much as tw- seventy-five percent, which is. Massively concerning um on lots of fronts. So um when you're talking about all of that, I think um. There's a lot of work to be done and they're looking into um that, but um it's a, it's a shocking statistic. Um, and so people are very concerned about that. Um, the other um fun fact is that uh we have. Uh, a a while ago, before the pandemic hit, we were supposed to be um putting together our s- our uh plans for the. Student Opportunities Act funding, which, as you remember, uh we were slated to get zero. However, um which allowed us to do the short form as opposed to the long form, and you were supposed to get. At um, you know, community input and buy-in on how you would spend zero um and still submit a form. So I'm being circuit, you know, but however, they have now um said the throwdown deadline is January fifteenth. Um, and there will be no exceptions to that, so I am proposing that uh I take. Our uh strategy for continuous improvement, which has been thoroughly vetted and um approved by our school community. At all levels, um and use that to fill in where I would have liked money if I was gonna get some. Um, and use that so that I don't have to reconvene everybody else um to to make this happen. Um, and finally, uh if that, if you're okay with that, I'm assuming that the committee will be fine with that because it has to be submitted on the fifteenth. Again, for zero money, so I think there's no risk. Um. And uh finally, uh the uh really riveting budget director for the state, um sometimes we just check his pulse. But um he said today that the second round of the um Esser Grant Funds. The state did receive their award letter and they are going to receive eight hundred and fifteen million. Um, ninety percent of that will be in direct um district grants, so that'll be um. According to them, they haven't done the calculations per district, but it'll be. I don't know where it came up, three point seven to three point eight percent more than um. Then we received before, and that will be available for districts through twenty twenty-three, so there will be some. Another round of funding to support things that we need um moving forward, and it can be used just like it was. Um, for anything that we need to get us through the pandemic, whatever that could look like. So that was um good news for today. They had zero other budget news.
What fund was it?
Well, it's the Esser Grant, please don't ask me to what the acronym is cuz I couldn't, I couldn't.
We've got a lot of hands up here, Beth.
COVID money, Jeff, COVID money.
Yeah, it's, but I, I don't remember the specific um acronym, which is why I just threw it out there, but it, he called it. It's not even called this, Jeff, but he, the the budget director made it up himself, which I thought was really, really wild for him. He called it Esser two. So. Um, and I see hands, so I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. Who wants to go first? Hannah, I think, was up first.
Yeah, Hannah.
Yeah, I I had two questions. One, um, do you feel like the drop in FAFSA is. Is there any way for you to know if that's reflected in our students?
Uh, I'm sure it will be reflective in our students, but we'll um, you know, we do a report here to um. To the committee, probably as we move into spring, as to what what our students' next steps are, and so um. I'm sure today, I I mean, I just heard this this afternoon at three thirty. I haven't even had a chance to talk to Mr. Carpenter. You're welcome, Jessie. So we'll um. We're, we'll follow up and see um what that means for our students, and we'll, we'll continue to follow and share that with with you guys.
Um, and my other question, um, I was glad that we talked a little bit about. Um, just teachers and students being able to talk about the events yesterday. Um. So I'm just wondering, because what we saw is terrorism and it's a national crisis, um that. Has left particularly black, indigenous, and people of color feeling unsafe. I just, I didn't know if you or maybe Jessie. Could speak to like if counselors or the adult supports that have been matched up with students are. Keeping in mind that some students may actually be going through some trauma and need some, not just an educational conversation, but support.
I mean, I think um. I think we've been incredibly mindful about that, and I think that's what was very organic about today's opportunities for students. And it's not just today, that's the other piece about that. I think um. I think teachers have been extremely, uh I I should say, all staff has been ex- have been extremely sensitive to. Ensuring that kids feel or are engaged, and they get very. Stressed. I think we were talking about that as an administrative council today, our our um, our entire faculty and staff. Is constantly worried, is it enough? Are we engaging enough? Um, and I think um. The answer is going to be no matter what, no, right? It's cuz um we don't have everybody in front of us five days a week. Um, and that's definitely gonna have an impact, but I feel like. We do have a culture, or we're working really hard to build a culture where kids do feel safe in different. In different areas of the school, as I think Odie alluded to, whether it's in advisory or if it's in particular classrooms, if it's in. Um, certain activities, um at least starting to bridge conversations, and maybe. It wasn't where they were headed first, but it evolved into something, and teachers stopped and let that, those conversations happen. Um, so I do feel like um we can always get better at it, but I do feel like we are, we are trying to foster that culture of keeping kids. Um, engaged and feeling like they can talk to anybody that they need to talk to. Um, and we're there to help and support in any way possible. Jessie, is it uh? Anything else that you?
No, I I think, I think you uh portrayed that well, and um, you know, certainly some of our um guidance counselors, school adjustment counselors. Um, definitely uh work with certain kids consistently, but also in times like these, look out for students who. Might need some extra support, and so um, you know, we had a lot of people walking around halls today. Um, looking into classrooms to see the affect that students had um throughout the day.
But we're gonna keep working on it. That's a lot, that's a, that's a constant thing to work on, I think.
Well, especially this year with everything the kids are going through. I think people are more um on alert for, for. Uh, changes in kids demeanor, um signs of depression, things like that.
Yep.
Um, I see John's hand up. And Elvis, is that your finger that's up there, Art?
It's Art, and it's, it's, it's an appropriate finger.
I am Art's virtual hand, go Art.
Jessie, or maybe either one of you, how is MCAS gonna fast uh diploma for kids?
I can, I can answer quickly, Beth. Uh, right now, um, last year, they use uh competency determination. Where kids who had not passed MCAS, um, the state looked at it um and said if they took certain classes. Um, and passed those classes, that um essentially it was the same as passing MCAS. Um, so certainly, um, they just canceled uh the senior um retakes of the test, or for any kids new to Massachusetts. Um, they postponed it, and they're gonna use that competency determination in English and math. Uh, if it turn, right now, they're planning on on testing uh in the spring, uh sophomores um and juniors. Um, I would assume if that doesn't happen, they'd move to the competency determination again. Um, and basically, we go through and check kids' classes, and then um it's uh Beth's uh duty to then ver- confirm it. And send it in to uh state, so um we're in the process of doing that uh tomorrow. Uh, we're gonna get um the early part done. Um, which just includes a couple of kids, and then I'm sure if there's more testing canceled, then they're probably gonna end up. Having longer lists of kids who didn't take English and math.
Okay.
Uh, Dennis, do you have your hand up?
I I had one last question, which kinda goes back to Beth, I think, that if if she heard anything from the, from the folks in the east. Uh, I got asked the same question about forty times this week.
Oh.
Well, twenty of them was from the same person multiple times, but okay, that question is. You know, are the kids gonna have to have the vaccine in the fall before they come back to school?
We have no information.
Did they say anything at all about that today?
Nope.
You know, I, I mean, I, I can't, I can't imagine if it's in, if it's in state law for the other stuff that it's in right now.
No discussion of that at this point.
Yeah, okay.
All right. And now, we save the best till last. Here from Sandy.
She was really looking forward to that last spot. She's, she's a big fan of mine right now.
How about Sandy? We put you up front next, next meeting.
I reworked what I was going to say um to something else at this stage of the game. I I apologize, I didn't not, Happy New Year, by the way, to everybody. I did not get a report to you. I did start it, and I, my, this time of year, I like to provide you with information and data that I think is. Um, kind of helpful as we go into the budget season, and and I will provide that next time. It was about our RTI process. The number of referrals and the amount of testing, and it's really good data, but I had to go on the search for it to get, make sure it was accurate. And I never completed my report, so I apologize, but I wanted to say something, um, you know, based on, you know, what. We're dealing with in our, our country and right now and the pandemic and everything. Um. You know, some things that I think that are really, you know, we were talking today in admin a little bit about the silver linings and um. The relationships that are being built, um that might not have been built um in the way that they are right at this very moment with students and families. To help support each other, um have been incredible, and I'm gonna give you just one example, and I'll, I'll leave you with this. We've been talking a lot about transition and and my department, you know, special education, transition can be a little bit different, and what I mean by that is post-secondary. Uh, you know, uh not necessarily a, a typical path. And um some really strong and um thoughtful and empathetic staff have been working closely with families. At a very difficult time when maybe courts aren't open, um, and I say courts because there's often paths to guardianship. Or things like that that need to be handled, and our staff are working really closely with families at a very challenging time to make sure that they have. Everything they need to be prepared for whatever's next for their children. Um, and I think that that's something that may not have happened in the way that it is right now. Um, and people are coming together to really uh con- consider what the best steps are for kids. And um how we can work together and make um a better understanding of all that you have to go through to get to. Um, the best spot after they leave school, which can be a scary thing for families and for, and for our students, um. Especially within um our department, so I just wanted to comment on that and the work that's being done on the part of our staff and. The willingness for families to be open to our support is, is really remarkable, and I just wanted to, to say that tonight. And next time, I will have a little more data for you, and I'll make sure I get that report to you, but I thought that that was important to share. So, thank you.
Does anybody have us, any specific questions for Sandy?
Is that Dennis's hand up too? I I can't.
Well, I see Dennis's hand up, and I, is Jeffrey's up?
Um, Cindy, I, I'm just. With like food insecurity and everything going on, like uh, are, what's going on with like our meals and like food assistance and. Since USDA grant was up for the free lunches, like what, what's the impact on that right now with the kids and families and?
Well, I know there's been a. Right, I can't speak directly about what, what um Jeremy is doing at this very moment, but I know there's been a lot of community support and. Um, if any of you weren't aware of our, our most recent uh, at, at the holiday gift drive, I'm just gonna add that in there. Um, I know we were in for um a hundred and forty-five um students um in a very. Wonderful way so that they had a, a great holiday. I can't speak directly to what we're doing within the school district at this very moment. I know it was happening prior to. January one, but I don't know if Beth has something she could add there. I don't know.
Well, my understanding is that um the meal program is still um, has been extended and is still continuing as it has been. It will continue um all the way through, um and I, I know all of our community groups that we worked with. Um, from the beginning of the pandemic are still fully organized and um. Fully meeting weekly and um providing resources and um looking for additional resources, so I feel like. Uh, that these programs are still ongoing and um and families are, are getting the support uh that they need.
I would just add that um, you know, the student.
Uh, you're muted, you.
Sorry, I, you'd think after um all these meetings, I'd learned to control the computer. The uh, I was just gonna add that uh, the students are all getting breakfast and lunch. For free from now till the end of the year.
Yep.
And uh to Beth's point about um just the, the area, uh the south county, there's a group of South County people, about seventy that get together. Um, once a month at least, um talking about food security, and a lot of these groups are working together to ensure that all families. In South County are, are accounted for and, and getting the food that they need. So that group includes, uh Jeremy um is part of that. Um, Charles and I are, are kept abreast of what goes on, and so that group is doing a great job to help them.
Yeah, and I'll just add, um Jenny Schwartz has been a hero throughout this. She's the coordinator from Fairview Hospital, pre- um previously from the co-op.
That's great. Well, I just wanna say that I love this meeting because I didn't get uh kicked off at all.
You don't have squiggles on your face?
No, I mean, it's kind of nice to have conductivity, and I miss you in this beautiful um library, but. Next meeting hopefully is going to be a hybrid meeting. Um, I wanted to test out the owl tonight, but it's just me here. So that's kind of hard to test with. Next meeting, if you wanna come uh to the library, we will have this new piece of equipment, and uh if you are. Choosing to stay home, you're gonna be the ones to attest that we were able to be understood. So that's a progress, I hope. And um, I wish you all well. I'm glad we're gonna get together in two weeks. Um, because there's more work to do, and I appreciate um uh you attending. Uh, this is nothing compared to what our senators and representatives did last night in terms of extra hours. But I do appreciate that we went a half hour more than I would hope, so let's see how efficient we can be in the future. And Beth, I hope you feel better, and.
Thank you.
Jonathan, I hope you feel better. I don't know who else in this meeting doesn't feel that great, but um.
No reason to panic, though. We're good. I'm just.
I'm not panicking.
No, I just I'm saying that it's a wider crowd. I just uh feeling a little off, but we're it's not nothing serious.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you very much, everybody, and.
Motion to adjourn.
Yep, uh, second. We got a motion to adjourn from Bonnie.
Second.
Second. Second from Jeffrey. I roll call vote uh from Hannah.
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Arthur?
No, no, that's the yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And Jane, yes. Okay, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.